And the public is able to see us now? Okay, thank you. Thanks Elijah. So I'll open the Planning Board meeting, have inquiry for Wednesday, May 20th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. I'll read in what I typically read in for our Zoom meetings pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18. And the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within 48 hours, we will post a link of the recording on the town's website and/or the town's social media page. The following members of Bridgewater Planning Board are participating remotely. Patrick Driscoll, Raymond A. Jamian, Jean Guerino, Steve Geller, and William Akins, who's an associate member. Is Michael McDonald on yet? No?
No.
He's not.
Michael is not in attendance as of right now. If he joins us, we'll let everybody know. During the meeting, all votes will be taken via roll call. The following Bridgewater Town staff will also be participating remotely. Jennifer Burke, Community Economic Development Director, Elijah Romulus, and Leslie Dorr. Is Anthony Arrow joining us this evening or no?
He's not.
So Mr. Anthony Arrow is not in attendance. At this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board will, the board's mics will be unmuted throughout the whole meeting. And as items appear on the agenda, the project's representative will be unmuted. If the project is a public hearing and also public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature and ask your question by listing your name and address and your question. The chair will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu, and you will be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking your questions. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. All right. Any questions? All right, so first item on the agenda, we have the town of Bridgewater zoning ordinance. This is our third public hearing under reconsification of the town of Bridgewater zoning ordinances. We had hoped to have Attorney Bobrowski with us this evening. He notified us that he has another commitment in another community. He asked that we continue this meeting to June 3rd. After our last meeting, which was on May 6th, we submitted six Excel pages, two, in my printout, it was six, I printed it landscape, six Excel pages with questions and comments that were brought up by the public, including questions about dimensional boundaries, disputes through the ZVA Planning Board, different types of residential accessory uses, the number, including the number of unregistered vehicles, trailers, or parts, storage of unregistered motor vehicles, etc., and the number of those that you could have. Prohibited accessory uses, outdoor storage and display of material goods, steel garages, home occupations as a right, home occupation by special permit. We had a lot of discussion about RVs. We had many concerns with the restrictions on RVs and the front yard setback. We asked them to review and provide feedback on that. Permitted accessory structures, this was fence and hedge height, setbacks, temporary storage of a boat, motorcycle, camper, membrane sheds, pods, etc. So we asked them to review that section as well and gave them the comments on that. Prohibited accessory structures, which was Section 4.42. When a variance is required for non-conforming single and two-family residential structures. Somebody brought up, this seems to be a conflict in that section. Reconstruction after catastrophic event of demolition. Parking for non-conforming commercial uses in residential districts. We had a lot of discussion on retreat lots and the number that you could have, etc. We had some questions on what was a flexible development and what is done with the open space. Somebody asked us why the manufactured elderly, manufactured housing elderly community didn't allow clotheslines. We talked about the Plan Development District and the new Plan Development District. We talked about the permit issuance. Storage permits does not comply with the current plans of our building office, etc. We talked about and submitted to and asking why we have the powers of the Board of Appeals listed. This was spell up 48. We asked them to review our request for reasonable accommodation. And it seems like a duplication of MGL 521 in the federal regulations. We sent some definitions over to him to be reviewed and we asked him to look at the table of uses and provide an explanation at the beginning of the table for definition of BA and PB. So those were the comments that we gathered from the last meeting that we want to have further discussion on with Attorney Bobrowski. I'd open it up to board questions, but what I'd like to do is, is just, we're going to continue this meeting to June 3rd. What I'd like to do is just get any new comments, you know, if it isn't related to an RV or accessory use, storage, and things like that, that we've already submitted to Attorney Bobrowski. If there's any new comments or new information that the board should hear from either board members or the public. I don't open it up to the board first to see if there's anything new. Is everybody muted or they're just, there's no one?
I'm good.
Mr. Romulus, is there anybody, do we have anybody from the public that would like to add something new before we vote to continue this with Attorney Bobrowski to see if there's anything we should add to our list that was sent to him?
Yes, I see one hand from Fred Chase and Janet Hansen.
Yes, why don't we bring on Mr., is Mr. Chase first?
Yes, I will unmute him right now.
Thank you very much Elijah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just remind the board of comments that I had delivered to previous meetings in this regard with respect to the citing of large, large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays in residential districts. I think that experience in the town in recent years strongly suggests the inadvisability of continuing the practice of special permit allowances for large-scale ground-mounted solar arrays in residential districts. As the board is well aware, litigation is ongoing in this matter, in a particular case. It will, and I'm sure has already incurred some significant legal expense to the town. And I really think that it's inadvisable to continue the practice of special permit allowance for that kind of utility scale site in a residential district. And accordingly, I think that the table of uses in that regard should be amended to reflect a simple prohibition against citing of that large-scale facility in a residential district. Thank you.
Great. And just for clarification, Ms. Burke, that was sent to him after the first meeting, correct?
That is correct.
But he should be addressing that along with these concerns that we got from the last meeting, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you.
Chairman, my understanding was that this discussion that we're having now on zoning did not immediately take into account the table of use. Are we actually doing table use also, or is it being put off to another time?
No, it includes the table use and the, and I think, if you, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Burke, but after our first meeting that we had in public, I think that was March 6th, March 4th, somewhere in there?
I think it was March 4th, but yeah.
We asked for a, some sort of a legal opinion because Mr. Bobrowski had brought that there had been some sort of a change in regards to, almost like the Dover Amendment in regards to the solar.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that you asked for an official legal opinion. I can seek one out if you'd like.
Yeah, because I think we should know, I think we should know if we can change it. And if we can change it, if the board wants to change it, we should make that recommendation back to the council, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to recognize that our planning board member, Michael McDonald, has entered the meeting.
Hi, Michael. Do we have somebody else that would like to speak? Mr. Robbins?
I think the next person was Janet Hansen. I'm going to unmute her right now.
Hi, Janet Hansen, 665 Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. I just want to make sure the PDD questions are not lost in the shuffle of all the RV questions and everything because that was spent a lot of time talking, which is understandable. But I am very concerned about the PDD, which I believe you guys know because I sent a couple of letters about it. It's just, to me, not understanding why it has to be changed 100%. It was completely rewritten and I'm reading it and I just don't understand what restrictions are in place for it. How does one become a PDD? What are the, you know, there's a lot of concerns in the way it's written and I need that addressed. I and others would like to see that addressed. So I just wanted to just put it up there to the top of the list if we could.
And I apologize, Mrs. Hansen. I just basically hit the high points, but on the list that Ms. Burke submitted to Attorney Bobrowski, it basically takes up, all the questions for the PDD takes up almost one of my pages. So talk protection 9.44, why are dimensional requirements totally eliminated, having a lot size? And it goes into, there's a big difference. There are no size lot restrictions. I read the, I read the whole, the whole, and what is very confusing. Is the only, is this the only bylaws 100% changed? Why is it even necessary to do that? So it goes on and on and on.
Okay.
I don't know if we can, if you request it, if we can share that document at some point, Ms. Burke? Or we can have it for our next meeting, but I can tell, I can tell you just by looking at the notes I have in front of me, it was clearly explained to Attorney Bobrowski.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it, that it wasn't important. So if you do have it there, I just, I'm just making sure because it is a confusing thing. And among other things, that one is of concern. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think the next comment that we had was in the chat from Pat Neri. It reads, will there be any discussion about the PDD zone? I find it confusing. We will be able to discuss, will I be, will we be able to discuss the letter I sent to regards of the marijuana odor zoning? And I find the flexible development is too generous. I'm not sure if if Pat Neri would like to speak further on the issue.
I can, Pat, if you don't mind. So I believe the flexible development question, I believe, is on the spreadsheet that was sent to Attorney Bobrowski in regards to the letter that she sent, I think it was this past week or late last week regarding marijuana odor. That's a new item. That's not, like, it wasn't in the zoning. She was requesting zoning included to acquire some changes to odor surrounding marijuana. And that is not something we are considering at this time. That would be at a later date that the, that the zoning would change in that regard. So I think my file for when we're reviewing, you know, more different policy changes, but that's not part of this discussion.
Is it something that we should just ask Attorney Bobrowski about? Why we have him accessible?
We can.
If he has any experience with it? Just add it to that spreadsheet? And then I added under flexible development. Did Ms. Neri want to speak or did she not want to speak?
I didn't get any response.
Do we have anybody else waiting, Mr. Robbins?
No, not, oh, actually, yes, I think Pat just raised her hand, so let me. I mean, she's unmuted.
Hello, I agree. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
I totally agree with Janet Hansen about the PDD development. As I was reading it, it appears to give regulations for how a landowner could create a PDD zone, not guidelines for someone with, that is already within the PDZ, the PDD zone can be controlled or regulated. So it's, it's very vague, at least to me. So I hope at some point before this whole zoning reconsification is finalized, I will understand it or it can be eliminated and, and brought back to where the PDD zone was initially begun years ago. This new zoning is very, very, gives a lot of latitude to whoever is doing this. And we have a little bit of control now, not a lot, but a little bit on the PDD zone. And it's not something that I think would be developed all over town. I'm just concerned about the property that's not far from my home. And hopefully, as far as that marijuana zoning goes, if it can't be addressed during this time period, maybe it can be introduced and we can do an amendment to the zoning so that we have something in place. And as far as that flexible development goes, it's really, there are no regulations. And I think all of you on the planning board know that if you give a developer or a contractor that much latitude, you're going to really be in a big mess. Thank you for listening.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one comment?
Sure.
Question regarding the odor. Since we're doing a complete rezoning, I don't understand why odor many cause cannot be part of zoning. Since we're doing, again, this is complete overhaul of the zoning.
No, I agree. I think that's why we should add it to the list. And that if, if he has some experience with that, maybe he can guide us. So you want to add it to the current list that we're submitting to him, correct, Mr. Jamie?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I think next is Maureen, I'm sorry if I mispronounced my last name, Minna San.
Minna San.
Did it write?
Good enough. Go ahead. My husband's going to talk. Warren.
I've, we've missed your other meetings as far as these new zoning regulations are concerned. And I'm curious, how did you come up with the setback distance from the street to, you know, the setback of either 30 or 35 feet? How did that number come up?
A lot of that, that's, we didn't change any setbacks, correct, Ms. Burke?
That's correct.
And that is, is that is from the edge of the street or is that from the middle of the road?
From the layout.
From the layout of the street.
From the what on the street?
From the layout. So just with a, go ahead. Why don't you explain one, Ms. Burke?
So where the, so there's a right-of-way layout and the setback is from that point. So.
I don't understand. What is a right-of-way layout?
So typically, a right-of-way layout is about 40 feet, 40 to 50 feet, depending on the street. And so from the center line of the road, it would be 20 to 25 feet on either side. And then the setback would begin after that point.
I'm still totally confused. I have a street in front of my house.
Yeah.
Edge of the street that's asphalt and then next to that is dirt. Is that where the setback starts? Is where the street meets the dirt?
Likely, likely yes, but I'd have to know the street and I'd have to look at the, the layout plans of your street, but likely yes.
Okay, my concern is if we have these minimum setbacks, if we don't know where to measure from, then how do we know if we're in compliance? My, excuse me, my understanding is that there are cement boundaries placed along the street, at least on our street. And so if you go by that, the, from our street, it looks like the, the setback is like, I don't know, three or four feet from where the pavement ends and that's where it starts, setback starts. There were no such things on my street that we've seen. Okay, who do you next, we'll take a look.
And these setback regulations are for new buildings, not existing buildings, right?
That's correct.
No, well, I'm thinking like if we store an RV, it has to be so many feet this way, so many feet that way. And the, this mentioned setback in the regulations.
There's a table, Ms. Burke, it depends on what district you live in.
That's correct.
And the setback requirements, not district, haven't changed. But what we, what we are going to reconsider is that we got, we heard loud and clear at the last couple of meetings that having RVs in the setbacks is not desirable. So we're having him review that.
So having, you're saying having our trailers or RVs in our yard is, that's not acceptable by the town?
No, no, he misspoke. He's saying that we heard that the residents are not happy with the requirement that it be outside of the setback. So we're, we're going to have him relook at that.
Oh, okay. All right. Because it can, it can present quite a hardship if you're, if you're, if there's going to be some restrictions on that. If you go around, you can see quite a few people have them and they, you squeeze them in wherever you can. All right, what else? What's your last question? I do, what is driving all these changes as far as setbacks and zonings? We keep your boat trailing, we can keep this, we keep that. What's the impetus to all this change?
Ms. Burke?
I believe it was two to three years ago, the town appropriated money to do a revision to its zoning ordinances to bring them up to today's standards and make them more conforming to state law and to address some of the issues that they found over the years and to, you know, help drive some economic development and different things like that. So there's been many different thought processes about what's, why it's happening. But this has been going on, been talked about for several years. And the council, I think, appropriated the money in 2018 and we've been working on this since then.
It's time how we've missed this and how is it these, how are these meetings being advertised?
Which meetings are you referring to?
That, that you're having these planning meetings. I understood they were advertised to the public, but I guess my husband and I managed to miss all these meetings that were open to the public.
So, so Ms. Burke, originally it was advertised in the newspaper, on the town website, on the Facebook page, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we're not on Facebook. If we're not on Facebook, which he isn't, if we're not, we don't get a newspaper, so that takes care of that. So then you have to get ahold of the, stay in touch with your website, which is very difficult to manage. Or you don't know what's going on. Is that correct?
Well, those are our options for notifying the public as to, I mean, we can't, we can't send notices to every resident in the town of Bridgewater.
Can you make a more manageable website to, to look at things?
We are actually looking, I believe there is a website upgrade coming. I haven't seen it yet, so I don't know what it looks like, but I do believe there is a website upgrade coming.
That would be lovely. Thank you. It is user-friendly.
So we, are we redressed with the zoning? Does he have any more questions about the zoning document?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I did get one comment from Stephanie Quirk. Is there, is there an anticipated timeline when we can expect a response to citizen comments? And what can we expect back? Question mark, something written, question mark.
I think we, we hope to get a lot of this resolved at the June 3rd meeting, correct, Ms. Burke?
Yes.
And then from that meeting, if we don't vote on it June 3rd, we'll ask Attorney Bobrowski to create a laundry list or an amendment, so to speak, like he did last time?
Yes.
Any questions?
He will be here to, he will be at the meeting, virtually at the meeting on June 3rd to address these comments in person.
And just a question of clarifications, some of the, some of the bigger concerns like the RV, like the, the storage units and, and whatnot. They, they were suggested by Attorney Bobrowski, right?
Not necessarily. I'd have to go back and look at my notes. They were all through the committee meeting.
I think, I think I was on the committee and to be honest with you, I don't really remember a lot of discussion about RVs. And that honestly may have just been an oversight because I don't know if anybody on the committee had an RV or really knew about it. So it may, that may have just been an oversight. I don't remember, I don't personally remember a lot of discussion about it. I do remember a lot of discussion about steel garages and things of that nature. And I was, I was in favor of removing the steel garages. But now after having this discussion, I think, you know, I'm probably okay with it. So I, I think that this is a good process and, and.
Yeah, because I, I took time over the last week because, you know, we're stuck in our houses to drive around Bridgewater and just take a look to see what they're, they have for steel garages and all the things that were going to be banned on this thing, how many RVs were out there? And it's quite a lot.
Yeah.
It's quite a lot.
We've got, we've had more discussion, but do we have any other questions before we continue this, Elijah?
Looks like Janet Hansen has raised her hand for another comment. I'm unmuting right now.
Hi, I just wanted to help out people who didn't know, like Maureen, I guess. I forget how I did it, but I get emails from the town. You can sign up on the website, right, to get emails.
That is correct. Yeah.
Right, email, email notifications of all the meetings.
I forget how you do it, but I get emails. So that's the only way I can find out. So I just thought I'd pass that on in case they weren't aware of it. That's all. Thank you.
All right. I have a raised hand from Robin Thomas. I will be unmuting right now.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I just have a question. I heard a question from, I think it was Pat Neri about smells. And I don't know where these plan developments end up, but we happen to live on, I believe, the other side of Bridgewater compared to the majority of people participating here. And we've got this lovely area behind us that we've lived in for 25 years. It's pretty nice. And on the other side of the 13 acres behind me is 104, which for the past 20 years has been absolutely wonderful to live in. But the last two or three has turned into kind of an annoyance with our neighbors not being so neighborly. And we have a very loud neighbor who is constantly producing and producing and producing and producing constantly. And, you know, right now it's quiet, but up until 6 o'clock at night and starting very early in the morning, it's very loud and very smelly. And that would be Bridgewater Farm Supply. And they were lovely neighbors, but now they're not. So speaking of smells, what is being done about that kind of a smell? Where it's constantly mulching and, you know, that might be great for farmers and for residents, but it's not great for the people that live here. And, you know, the trucks that go by and the jack breaks constantly because it goes from 30 miles an hour in one little corner to 45, where it shouldn't be 45, by the way. It's now all built up. And there are people crossing there and there's a little school there. So, you know, maybe there's some areas that need to be attended to. That's just a question. So I'd like to know about those kinds of scents and odors that are affecting our home. And we're far enough away from them that we shouldn't be hearing these things. They're actually on the other side of the river. So that's just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we good, Elijah?
Uh, yes, I think that's the last comment related to zoning.
Okay, so there's no more board comments? You know, we'll just ask Ms. Burke to update this list with the comment to flexible development and adding the marijuana odor. And again, asking for that solar clarification. Is there anything else we want to add? And do we have a motion to continue to June third at six thirty? So moved. I'll make a motion to continue this zoning ordinance hearing, six thirty on June third. Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Second for discussion, any other discussion or anything else we want Ms. Burke to add? I know Mr. Jamian asked for the order. Came out of the comment from Ms. Neri. We had flexible development additional comment. We had the solar reminder. Maybe, see, I don't know what we have in, in place for smells now or not, so.
I believe there's another hand raised from Pat Neri. I don't know if you want to still allow people to speak.
We have a motion in a second for discussion. Yeah, that's okay. Just, unless the board wants to vote. It's, is the board okay with allowing Ms. Neri to speak after the motion?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just wanted to say I did mention that PDD development as Janet Hansen did. Is that on the list?
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's already on the list.
Okay. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second to continue to June third at six thirty. There's nobody else trying to speak? If we're good. All in favor? Oh, I can't do that.
Yeah, roll call.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. So we have a public meeting. It's to ratify the state of emergency procedures of the town of Bridgewater. This is a discussion of the board. It's due to COVID-19. We will need to vote that the board recognizes and accepts the provisions of MGL, chapter 1106 regarding electronic signatures. And that its members will henceforth execute documents either with electronic signatures or with wet ink signatures, and that both will carry the same legal effect. The law in its entirety is at the link below, which is HTTPS backslash black backslash mass legislated.gov backslash laws, backslash general laws, backslash P A R T I backslash T I T L E X V backslash chapter 110G. So, wow. So do you just, do you want a discussion on this? Do you just need a vote, Mr. Romulus, or Ms. Burke?
Uh, yes, it would just be a vote based on the mass general law for electronic signatures.
If the board wants an explanation, I'm happy to explain why we're doing this.
I just want to know who's signing.
So I spoke with the town attorney, Jason Rollins, today. And he believes with the, if we, we have a form that we filled out and we list the roll call vote, that just the chairman needs to sign it. The attorney needs to notarize it. So once this vote is taken, if it's an affirmative vote, Pat, you would need to reach out to Jason Rollins to work with him to do a drive-through notarization at his office.
So, not to put Ray on the spot, but do you mind if either, I mean, I, I could have a baby tonight or tomorrow.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. However, it doesn't have to be you. It just, I think, has to be one of the people that was in the roll call vote. He can also do an elect, he can also, under the, the COVID state of emergency, he can do an electronic notarization. So.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm okay doing it, but if I'm unavailable or I'm gone for a couple of days.
Yeah, I just, I just need one person to do it. So.
Wouldn't it make sense to have me and Ray?
Um, no, we only need one. So I don't care.
Or?
If, if Ray's more available and you want, and Ray wants to be the sign, signatory, that's fine.
Well, let's clarify this again. Is it, can anybody do it or does it have to be the chair of us?
So no, so this, so I just need someone to sign this certificate of vote authorizing the electronic signatures. The electronic signature is just gonna be a backslash S, backslash, it's not gonna be anybody's name.
All right. So, so wait a minute. So I don't actually have to be around or Ray doesn't have to be around to sign the documents? We're just signing, we're signing, authorizing. You have the ability to electronically sign?
That's correct. And it's not gonna be anybody's name. It's gonna be a series of characters.
Okay. So every time a plan comes in, one of us doesn't have to be available to sign it. It's just the initial signature that has to be done.
That, that is correct. And this has to get recorded at the registry of deeds.
So either you or Elijah can sign using.
We are, we are not signing anything. The, we are putting a series of characters that represents an electronic signature that the registry of deeds has created on documents and plans.
Okay, but so let's say, let's say we approved an ANR tonight. And that has to be signed. Who, who, who handles that?
So what will happen is we will ask the, because it's a Mylar plan that has to be recorded, we would ask the engineer of record to put the electronic signature in the signature block. We would then review it and then it would get recorded.
So you'd actually, you'd give them a code at that point?
That's correct.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
This, this only is good through the end of the state of emergency. This is not.
So now that I understand, I don't have a problem doing it. I, I thought you'd actually.
I just need someone either to tomorrow or Friday to go to Jason's office to sign the certificate of vote. That's what.
I, I don't mind doing that. And if I get hung up, maybe I'll just call Ray and he can do it, if he doesn't mind.
That's fine.
Sounds good.
So do you need a vote on this, Ms. Burke?
Yes, we need it. So we need the motion that I think you read succinctly that you recognize and accept the provisions of MGL, chapter 110G. And then we need a roll call vote.
Somebody like to make that motion?
Anyone?
Um, yeah, I'll make the motion to, I can find it. I lost it. Um, to ratify the state of emergency procedure for electronic signatures. Do I have to put the number in?
Yes, but just to acknowledge the chapter 110G.
MGL, chapter 110G regarding electronic signatures.
For a second?
Second.
By Michael? Any discussion on it? So Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. We have minutes to be approved of March 15, 2020, and five, six, 2020.
I read them and I have emailed. I told Les that I would email her. I emailed her any corrections that I found.
Are they just written errors or are they?
Yeah.
All right, so calling my name. Got. Any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make, to approve the minutes of April 15th and May 6, 2020.
I'll say.
By Michael? All right, any discussion on the minutes? Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Any boards, committees, directors reports?
No.
Uh, no, not this evening.
What is just upcoming meetings? What is on the June third meeting? Is that a future meeting, Ken?
Yes, so we have the zoning ordinance, 365 Elm Street, special permanent site plan, and Old Field State's Phase Two Lot Release Request and Bond calculation.
When we set up that agenda though, should we take the, I mean, because that zoning could go on for a long time?
We'll do the other things first.
Do we, do we want to, do we want, do we want to put that, we already voted to move it to six thirty, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Did you, you made a comment, Ms. Burke, that I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
I said that we can do the other things first. It's the board's prerogative to take items out of order. So I don't anticipate Old Field taking that long. And you've already seen 365 Elm Street is just coming back with a special permit. So I don't anticipate that taking a very long time either, but that has been advertised for six thirty as well. So.
Well, it's actually, we have two public hearings. We have the 365 public hearing for the site plan and we have the special permit public hearing too.
Yeah, they're both at six thirty and we can do it.
Right.
Same time.
Can we, can we look at the minutes for my last lot release for Old Field? I thought we asked for some stuff to be done before the lot was released, like the conservation restrictions and stuff like that.
You shut that off, guys. I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, I can look into that prior to the next. I'll send it out in like the board package.
I thought we asked for certain things to be done before we released the lots, but I don't recall. But it'd just be nice to know what, what we said over the last couple of meetings.
Okay, yeah, can definitely look into that.
Oh, can we, can we change the, the zoning ordinance to seven o'clock or seven thirty? Even though we already said six thirty? Can we just?
You know, I thought about that. That's why I asked. We are, we already voted and people probably signed off, right?
Yeah, several people have signed off. I, I think it's fine to leave it at six thirty and people will just have to wait till you finish.
We've done that all along. We've changed things around at a meeting and there's been no problem. Cause they're all advertised at six thirty.
How many participants do we have this evening?
Twenty, twenty-six at the highest town, I believe.
Yeah.
All right. So anything else?
Can I assume that the June third meeting is still gonna be a Zoom meeting? We're not gonna be meeting there, right?
Yeah, we'll be in, we'll be in Zoom meetings for a while.
Yeah. What, what phase is the town for?
Um, we're not really, we weren't really in a phase because it depends on if you consider us office or kind of like retail because we help out, we service the public. So the town manager's office is determining protocols for a return to work situation. So.
Yeah, the, the other thing about Zoom is we really don't have to limit the number of people. If you had a public hearing and you had to limit the number of people and turn people.
Well, that, that's what I was gonna say. I mean, as of right now, the, the limit on public gatherings is still at ten. And the board and staff alone would add up to ten most likely. So, um, you know, this, you know, gives people an opportunity to participate.
What was the other one? All right, so Ms. Burke, you'll reach out.
Didn't someone shut this off?
You, you'll reach out to either me or Ray to meet up with Attorney Rollins?
I believe we're going to, we have the document. We're gonna just fill in the vote tonight and we're going to email it to Attorney Rollins tomorrow. So if you are around tomorrow, Pat, and you don't have a baby tonight, you can reach out.
I'm not having a baby at all, even though I.
If your wife doesn't have a baby tonight, can you reach out to Attorney Rollins tomorrow? I believe you have his contact information.
Yeah, so I, you're okay if I just shoot him an email and say, let me know how you need me to do it.
I mentioned to him that you would probably do that.
All right. And then if I'm not gonna be around, I'll touch base with Ray.
That's fine.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Do I have to roll call again? I'm sorry. I'm not used to this. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenough?
Yes.
Mr. Jamian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion in the second. Could you tell me? I motioned. Jean? Second?
Steve?
Steve? The last Zoom meeting, Pat, you'll have it down.
Oh, yeah.
And then when we actually get back physically together, you're gonna start doing roll call for everything.
Roll call.
All righty.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Take care. Have a good.